The chaplain for today is Pastor Julio May Jr. from Tabernacle de Vida Cristiana. Pastor, would you please lead us in prayer?
The Memphis Council and Mr. Chair, and I just want us to lead in a word of prayer. And I just wanted to keep this in mind, I'm using the acronym today, PEACE. So we want to use that as our prayer. Let us pray. Lord, we pray for peace. PEACE meaning protection and peace. That you will grant and protect the city of Memphis with peace and bring peace to our neighborhoods. Guide the council towards decisions that promote safety and stability. We pray for equity and justice. Pray for fairness, justice, and compassion toward all communities, especially the vulnerable and undeserved. We pray for alignment and wisdom. Pray that the council will have wisdom and discernment and alignment with what is good, ethical, and beneficial for Memphis. Pray for collaboration and unity. Pray for the respectful dialogue, unity, and diversity, and productive cooperation even amidst disagreement. Pray for endurance and strength for public servants. We pray for the health and endurance, emotional strength, and integrity of those who serve in the public office of the city of Memphis. We ask you, God, that you will order our thoughts and our words as we continue in this meeting. And we pray it all in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Chairman Canali, you are recognized at this time.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Greetings. Be it hereby known that Pastor Julio May Jr., in recognition of a life of exemplary qualities, outstanding service to the city, meritorious involvement in humanitarian affairs, and demonstrated concern for governmental process, has been appointed Chaplain of the Day by the Memphis City Council and is hereby entitled to all the honors, rights, privileges, and prerogatives appertaining to the office and to the display of this certificate, given under the seal the 18th day of November 2025, myself as chairman, but on behalf of all members of the Memphis City Council. Pastor, thank you so much for being with us today and for gracing us with those beautiful words. And thank you for all you do for our community. God bless you, my friend.
Thank you so much. Madam Comptroller, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Carlisle, Cooper Sutton, Easter Thomas, Ford, Greed, Logan, Smiley, Spinosa, Swearingen Washington,
Present.
Walker, Warren, White. Chairman Canali? Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Comptroller. I believe that Chairwoman-elect Swearingen Washington has read the meeting minutes from our November 4, 2025 meeting.
Thank you so much, Chairman. I have reviewed the minutes and find them to be in order. I move for the adoption of the November 4, 2025 meeting minutes, and I so move.
Minutes were moved by Swearingen Washington, seconded by Spinosa. Seeing no members in the queue, please appear to the voting screen. Members, please cast your votes for the minutes.
Cooper Sutton, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Smiley, yes. Spinosa, yes. Swearingen Washington, yes. Walker, yes. Warren, yes. White, yes. Chairman Canali, yes.
That item passes. Welcome to the November 18, 2025 regular meeting of the Memphis City Council. Meetings of the council shall be conducted in an orderly manner to ensure the public has the full, excuse me, the full opportunity to be heard and the deliberate process of the council is retained at all times. The Sergeant-at-Arms has meeting agendas available up front, as well as comment request cards for members of the public wishing to be heard on a specific item. All those wishing to speak on an item must turn in their comment card to the Sergeant-at-Arms before the item is called. If you are not here to speak on a specific item, you can note your request to give general comment at the end of the meeting. As Chair, I will only recognize citizens that properly register to speak by submitting a completed comment request card to the Sergeant-at-Arms. Members of the audience and persons addressing the council will not be permitted to engage in gossip, make defamatory, personal, slanderous, or profane comments, or use abusive or vulgar language. Chairperson of the council may maintain order by giving any persons who are in violation of the stated rules of decorum a warning to cease any violative conduct, in order to leave the council's chambers, or by giving an order for security personnel to remove any disruptive person in the council's chambers who refuses to leave voluntarily. These rules are posted on the door as you enter the chamber and as you pick up comment cards. An example of an 11-by-17 poster is also posted on the door. Signs larger than the permitted size are prohibited and will be removed from the chamber. All that to say, let's have a good meeting. We have some important work to get through. Some housekeeping items, item number 39 is held until December 2, 2025. Madam Comptroller, would you please call item number one?
Item number one is a resolution recognizing and honoring the sacrifice of service members and their families during Veterans and Military Families Month. This resolution is sponsored by Councilman Spinosa.
Councilman Spinosa, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chairman Canali. It's an honor to be here today. I've also got, obviously, Councilwoman Easter Thomas with me to help read this resolution and Councilwoman Cooper Sutton. If we could, please, have the honorees come join us up front, if you're in attendance today. So we're gonna read the resolution, and then the way this will work, if you don't mind, we'd like to take a photo or two. And then we've got a unique resolution for each one of you and a gift as well. Any council members that want to come down, you can come down as we read this. But with that, again, it's an honor to read this today. "Whereas throughout our nation's history, members of the United States Armed Forces have answered the call to defend our freedoms and safeguard democracy, often at great personal cost and sacrifice. And whereas November is designated as Veterans and Military Families Month, a time to recognize and honor not only the brave men and women who have served or continue to serve in our armed forces, but also their families, who stand steadfastly beside them through deployments, relocations, and the many challenges of military life." And?
Whereas military families serve our country in their own right, offering strength, resilience, and unwavering support to their loved ones in uniform, and deserve the full gratitude and respect of our nation and our community. The city of Memphis is proud to be home to many veterans, active-duty personnel, reservists, and military families whose contributions enrich our neighborhoods, strengthen our civic institutions, and inspire future generations of public service. The Memphis City Council recognizes the importance of ensuring that veterans and military families receive the care, support, and opportunities that they have earned, and reaffirms its commitment to promoting initiatives that improve their quality of life.
It is fitting and proper that the Memphis City Council, on behalf of the citizens of Memphis, publicly acknowledge and express deep appreciation for your courage, your dedication, and sacrifice of those who serve and those who stand behind them. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Memphis City Council, on behalf of the citizens of Memphis, Tennessee, hereby recognize November 2025 as Veteran and Military Family Month, and honors the extraordinary service and sacrifice of our veterans, service members, and their family. And I'll hand it back to you.
Thanks. Now, therefore, be it ordained, or be it further resolved, that the Memphis City Council, in order, proudly honors the following in recognition of Veteran and Military Families Month, November 2025. So with that, we've got the list of all the people here. Congratulations. Thank you. That is all, Mr. Chair. All right. We'll call the names. We'll call the names. All right, we've got Cassandra White, Antonia, Cassandra White is Councilwoman, Easter Thomas is mother. Antonio Parkinson, Will Richardson, Seth Mitchell, Richard Griffin, who is my honoree today. He's a fine man. He's a police officer at the Tillman Station. Kevin Brooks, Kelsey Johnson, John Lawson, Will Minton, Fred Dorse, Donnie Ectonaw, and Terry, my friend, Terry Nuswander. Thank you all very much. Picture time.
Can we still disapprove by acclamation? Madam Comptroller, would you show that approved by acclamation?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Chairman.
You can go ahead and call item two, please.
Item number two is a resolution honoring First Baptist Church of Lauderdale, celebrating 160 years. This resolution is sponsored by Councilwoman Cooper Sutton.
Councilwoman Cooper Sutton, you are recognized.
Okay. Yes, sir. Thank you. This resolution is by Councilwoman Cooper Sutton and Councilman Edmund Ford, Sr. Okay, you want to read this part? Okay. "Whereas the First Baptist Church Lauderdale, FBCL, is celebrating its 160th anniversary, making a remarkable history of faith, leadership, and community service in Memphis, Tennessee, and founded in 1865 as the first independent black Baptist church in Memphis. The congregation of First Baptist Church Lauderdale is widely regarded as the mother church for most black Baptist congregations in Memphis, by extension across West Tennessee. And under the leadership of Reverend Morris Henderson, First Baptist Church Lauderdale was chartered as the first colored Baptist church. And First Baptist Church Lauderdale has been guided by nine remarkable pastors throughout its history, and I would turn it over to Councilman Ford."
This is a mole, I guess, that's why she did that to me. Starting with Reverend Morris Henderson, 1865 to 1877. Reverend W.S. Ellington, 1894 to 1900. Reverend Dr. T.O. Fuller, 1900 to 1942. And you know we got T.O. Fuller Park named after him. Yes, yes. Reverend Dr. J.M. Nabrit, Sr., 1943 to 1947. Reverend Dr. Henry Clark Nabrit, 1947 to 1968. Reverend Dr. Charles L. Dinkin, Sr. Getting to my age now. Yep, 1969 to 1994. Reverend Dr. Noel G.L. Hutchison, 1995 to 2017. Reverend Chester Berryhill, Jr., 2019 to 2024. Reverend Christopher D. Walton, 2024 to present. And?
Yes, sir. And the church relocated in 1906 from Zion Hall at 217 Beale Street to 495 Fraser Street, now St. Paul Avenue. And in 1939, moved to its current location at 682 South Lauderdale Street. And in 1941, the Sanctuary Choir of First Baptist Church Lauderdale presented the first rendition of Hendel's Messiah by the Black Congregation in Memphis, an annual tradition that continues to this day. And in recognition of his service, the Shelby County Negro State Park was renamed T.O. Fuller State Park in 1942, honoring the church's third pastor. And in 1954, the church amended its corporate charter, changing its name to First Baptist Church Lauderdale. And in 1963, became duly affiliated with the Progressive National Baptist Convention, Inc., and the American Baptist Convention. And in 2000, the church was listed as the National Register of Historic Places, acknowledging its historical and cultural significance. And the members and leadership of First Baptist Church Lauderdale have demonstrated enduring commitment to spiritual growth, community service, and the empowerment of generation of Memphians. And by the Memphis City Council, that we hereby honor and commend First Baptist Church Lauderdale on its 160th anniversary, recognizing its profound contribution to faith, culture, and history, and Memphis. And we extend our best wishes for continued blessings and success. Be it further resolved, that on this day, this resolution be presented to the members and leadership of First Baptist Church Lauderdale, and in expression of the city of Memphis' deepest gratitude and admiration for 160 years of faithful ministry and enduring contribution to the spiritual and cultural life of our city. Given by the hand and under the great seal of the city of Memphis, the 18th day of November 2025, Yolanda Cooper Sutton, and we will add Councilman Ford, because he's older and he knew some of these people. Memphis City Council. And we're gonna give this to you, because we need to add him. Okay. And put me in the middle. All righty. Oh, well, yes, sir. We will.
Madam Comptroller, please show that approved by acclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And please call item number three.
Item number three is a resolution pursuant to Chapter 9.6 of the Memphis and Shelby County Unified Development Code, approving a special use permit at the subject property located at 3605 Lamar Avenue. This resolution is sponsored by the Division of Planning and Development. It was held from November 4. The case number is SUP 25-28.
Madam Vice Chair, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. This item received a favorable recommendation at committee. The Department of Planning and Zoning, also LUCB, both recommended approval with conditions. And I so move.
Three was moved by Swearengen, Washington, seconded by Warren. Seeing no members in the queue, anybody want to hear from DPD or the applicant? Very good. Please take us to the voting screen.
Carlisle, yes. Cooper Sutton, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Spinoza, yes. Swearengen, Washington, yes. Walker, yes. Warren, yes. Police show Councilman Smiley is voting yes on this item. White, yes. Chairman Canali, yes.
That item passes. Madame Comptroller, please take a sip of water and call the MLGW fiscal consent items 17 through 38.
Item number 17 is a resolution awarding purchase order for gatekeepers to Wesco Distribution, Inc. in the amount of $1,019,540. Item number 18 is a resolution approving renewal to contract number 10332, ABB Software Maintenance with Hitachi Energy, to renew the current contract in the funded amount of $774,713. Item number 19 is a resolution approving the payment for street cut permits to the city of Memphis in the amount of $2 million. Item number 20 is a resolution awarding contract number 12607, Davis-Areater Building Screen Replacement to A&amp;B Construction Company, Inc. in the funded amount of $350,000. Item number 21 is a resolution awarding contract number 12605, McCord Mechanical Maintenance Building to Barnes &amp; Brower, Inc. in the funded amount of $3 million. Item number 22 is a resolution approving the execution of an amendment and extension of contract number 12416 between Memphis Light Gas and Water Division and Trunk Line Gas Company, LLC, in the amount of $16 million approximately. Item number 23 is a resolution approving the execution of a new contract number 12640 between Memphis Light Gas and Water Division and Texas Gas Transmission, LLC, in the amount of $6 million approximately. Item number 24 is a resolution approving the amendment of contract number 12313 between Memphis Light Gas and Water Division and A&amp;R Pipeline Company in the amount of approximately $9,500. Item number 25 is a resolution approving the execution of an extension of contract number 12398 between Memphis Light Gas and Water Division and Texas Gas Transmission, LLC, in the amount of $70 million approximately. Item number 26 is a resolution approving renewal and scope change to contract number 11292, cashiering system replacement with system innovators to renew and scope change the current contract in the funded amount of $159,497.24. Item number 27 is a resolution approving extension to contract number 12650, FlexDeploy Automatic Coal Migration to EBS Apex with Flexagon LLC, to extend the current contract in the funded amount of $197,760. Item number 28 is a resolution approving of extension to contract number 12652, meter reading with United Systems and Software, Inc. to extend the contract value in the funded amount of $137,082.90. Item number 29 is a resolution approving renewal to contract number 12378, fleet maintenance with Goodyear Commercial Tire and Service Centers, to renew the current contract in the funded amount of $987,996. Item number 31 is a resolution awarding contract number 12558, Mallory Pumping Station Filter Building Roof Replacement to B4 Applied, Inc. in the amount of $504,870.
Madame Comptroller, you skipped item 30.
Item number 30 is a resolution awarding purchase order for fuse elements to Brighter Days and Nights, Inc. in the amount of $669,900. Item number 31 is a resolution awarding contract number 12558, Mallory Pumping Station Filter Building Roof Replacement to B4 Applied, Inc. in the funded amount of $504,870.30. Item number 32 is a resolution approving ratification of purchase order number 7068545 with Brighter Days and Nights, Inc. Luminaire Floodlights LED, 1,000 watt, in the amount of $151,450.50. Item number 33 is a resolution awarding purchase order for Smart Water Meter Modules to Wesco Distribution, Inc. in the amount of $24,900. Item number 34 is a resolution awarding purchase order for water meter registers to Badger Meter Incorporated in the amount of $148,950. Item number 35 is a resolution awarding purchase order for gas smart meters and equipment to Ed Young Sales Company, Inc. in the amount of $1,980,389.94. Item number 36 is a resolution approving increase to contract number 12236, meter support maintenance with Elster Solutions, LLC, to increase the current contract in the funded not-to-exceed amount of $1,397. Item number 37 is a resolution approving ratification, renewal, and scope change to contract number 12464, Samsara Fleet Safety and Track Solution with Samsara Incorporated, to ratify, renew, and expand the scope of the current contract value in the funded amount of $929,714.14. And our final item, number 38, is a resolution approving renewal and extension to contract number 12186, Family Medical Leave Act with Unum Group, to renew and extend the current contract in the funded amount of $301,282.8. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our MLGW consent items.
Well done, Madame Comptroller. You can take a deep breath. Councilman Spinoza, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Committee recommends approval and I so move. And I feel like we should give you a round of applause or something. Thank you, Madame Comptroller.
MLGW was moved by Spinoza. Who's my second?
Warren.
Warren.
Seconded by Warren. Members, please cast your votes.
Carlisle, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Smiley, yes. Spinoza, yes. Swearengen, Washington, yes. Walker, yes. Warren, yes. White, yes. Chairman Canali, yes.
That item passes. Madame Comptroller, please go take us to our consent agenda, which will be items four through 11, plus item 45 on our add-ons.
What's going on?
I'm sorry, I'm here and it's not... Thank you. And please add me as a yes on the last vote.
So again, that's items... On consent, items four through 11, plus item 45 off of our add-ons.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number four is up for second reading. Ordinance number 5960 is sponsored by Councilwoman Easter Thomas. Item number five is up for second reading. Ordinance number 5961 is sponsored by the administration. Item number six is up for second reading. Ordinance number 5962 is sponsored by the administration. Item number seven is up for second reading. Ordinance number 5963 is sponsored by the administration. Item number eight is up for second reading. Ordinance number 5964 is sponsored by the Division of Planning and Development. Item number nine is up for second reading. Ordinance number 5959 is sponsored by the administration. It was held from November 4th. And on our add-ons, we have an ordinance up for first reading. Ordinance to establish Memphis City Council meeting dates for 2026 up for first reading. Ordinance number 5965 is sponsored by council members Swearengen, Washington, and Carlisle. And there is requests for this to be added on to the consent agenda.
And items 10 and 11, please.
And our engineering division, item number 10, a resolution approving the engineering plans for MBA Regional Detention Pond and Outfall Phase 1 and accepting bond as security. There is a request for same night minutes. Item number 11 is a resolution accepting public improvements for Austin Peace Center, contract number 5455, and releasing bond. There is a request for same night minutes. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our consent agenda items.
Thank you, Madame Comptroller. Madame Vice Chair, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. The committee met. There was a favorable recommendation. And I so move.
Councilwoman White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be recusing from items number four, six, and seven as I represent the Shelby County Commission.
Note, White as a recusal on four, six, and seven. Councilwoman Green, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to note for the record, I've received numerous emails about item number nine, the ordinance regarding Small Business Enterprise Opportunity Program. And many of the people who emailed me were confused procedurally. So I just wanted, maybe our comptroller or someone can state on the record that when we say the action requested is to adopt the ordinance on the second reading, that these will all still go to a third reading.
Yes, we cannot approve an ordinance on two readings. It must have three readings. So I was the one that held it from the last meeting, held the second reading. So it will be up for third reading on December 2nd. And if members of this body are not satisfied with the language to amend it, we can hold it again from there. But it will not be adopted on second reading.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Consent was moved by Swearengen, Washington, seconded by Warren, seeing no other members in the queue. Please, members, please cast your votes.
Carlisle, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Smiley, yes. Spinoza, yes. Swearengen, Washington, yes. Walker, yes. Warren, yes. White, recused. Chairman Canali, yes.
That item passes. Madame Comptroller, please take us to our fiscal consent agenda. Items 12 through 16, plus item 46 from our add-on agenda. In item 46, Madame Comptroller, if you will note as amended.
Thank you. Item number 12 is a resolution accepting grant funds in the amount of $105,175 from Blue Cross Blue Shield of Tennessee for repairs at David Karnes Park, District 6, Super District 8. This resolution is sponsored by Memphis Parks. It was held from November 4th. There is a request for same night minutes. Item number 13 is a resolution accepting grant funds of $30,000 from the Tennessee Department of Disability and Aging for the Josephine K. Lewis Senior Center, District 7 and Super District 8. This resolution is sponsored by Memphis Parks. It was held from 11/4. There is a request for same night minutes. Item number 14 is a resolution accepting grant funds of $30,000 from the Tennessee Department of Disability and Aging for Frazier Raleigh Senior Center, District 1 and Super District 9. This resolution is sponsored by Memphis Parks. There is a request for same night minutes. Item number 15 is a resolution approving the acceptance of a donated Can-Am Side-by-Side UTV valued at $32,098.99 by Shelby County Government. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by police services. There is a request for same night minutes. Item number 16 is a resolution to accept donation of one rocket, M18N dual-power light, valued at $550,000, and two M18 Red Lithium XC 5.0 batteries valued at $169 each from B. La Niti. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by police services. And on our add-ons, number 46, a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2026 operating budget. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by the administration with requests for it to be added on and same night minutes as amended. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our items.
Thank you, Madame Comptroller. And just to note that 16 was also same night minutes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to note for the record, item number 46 is a really big deal. I'm excited to see the council in unity on this and sponsoring it. The caption doesn't quite capture what it does, but this is the one that raises everybody's minimum pay for full-time employees in the city of Memphis to $40,000. And as you know, recently, we had some freezing of SNAP benefits. And I went in to the SNAP calculator and put in a single mom of two children making what some people in the city of Memphis were making prior to this resolution. And they qualified for food stamps. And so I am glad to know that especially as we approach the holidays, the council has seen fit to move this item forward to help lift those up who work for our city to make sure that they have food on the table and are able to, you know, afford basic needs. So I'm grateful. I know it's taken us a long time to get here from when I originally proposed it back in budget time. But I am grateful that we have gotten here and that we are going to be able to help so many families in the city of Memphis. So thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Green. Madame Vice Chair, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. I agree with our fellow councilwoman. Councilwoman Green, you shared your concern. We listened and we responded. And that's what we will always do. We're in this together for the betterment of our citizens. Madame Comptroller, I want to make sure on number 16 that you said $550. It sounded as if you said something else. No, that's what it should be, $550. Yeah, she said, you said $550,000. I wanted to clarify, make sure we meant $550.
We'll take that, too. Fiscal consent was moved by Swearengen, Washington, seconded by Warren, seeing no other members in the queue. Please prepare the voting screen. Colleagues, this includes item 46 as amended, just to make sure.
Carlisle, yes. Cooper Sutton, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Smiley, yes. Spinoza, yes. Swearengen, Washington, yes. Walker, yes. Warren, yes. White, yes. Chairman Canali, yes.
That item passes. Madame Comptroller, please take us to item 44 off of our add-ons.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One moment, please. Item number 44 is a resolution to accept and appropriate additional surface transportation block rent funds in the amount of $1,724,723 from the Tennessee Department of Transportation for the Winchester Drive Interchange at Perkins Road. Project number PW01025, Districts 3 and 4, Super Districts 8 and 9. This resolution is sponsored by the administration. There is a request for same night minutes for this item.
Councilman Smiley, recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The committee recommends approval and I so move.
44 was moved by Smiley, seconded by Spinoza. Seeing no members in the queue, please prepare the voting screen. Seeing no members in the queue, please prepare the voting screen.
Thank you. Carlisle, yes. Cooper Sutton, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Smiley, yes. Spinoza, yes. Swerengen, Washington, yes. Walker, yes. Warren, yes. White, yes. Chairman Canelli, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, please take us to item forty off our regular agenda.
Item number forty is a resolution approving the permanent easement acquisition of four properties located in the Greater Whitehaven Gardens subdivision for the use and benefit of the Public Works Division Memphis Storm Water, Memphis Storm Water Quantity and Quality Project, MSQ two, District Three, Super District Eight. This resolution is sponsored by the administration.
Councilman Smiley, you're recognized.
Committee met, recommended approval, and I so move.
Forty was moved by Smiley, seconded by Spinoza. Seeing no members in the queue, please prepare the voting screen.
Carlisle, yes. Cooper Sutton, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Smiley, yes. Spinoza, yes. Swerengen, Washington, yes. Walker, yes. Warren, yes. White, yes. And Chairman Canelli, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, please take us to item forty-one.
Item number forty-one is a resolution approving the 2026 operating and capital budgets for the electric, gas, and water divisions, all council districts. This resolution is sponsored by MLGW.
Councilman Spinoza, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Committee met, recommends approval and I so move.
Forty-one was moved by Spinoza, seconded by Warren. Before we go to the voting screen, I do have three public comment cards. Christine Fox up first, followed by Glenda Hicks, and then Andrea Bell. Name and address for the record. You have two minutes. Thank you.
Christine Fox, five eighty-four East McLemore, three eight one oh six. Good afternoon. I am here this afternoon to ask you to vote no on the proposed MLGW budget and the increase in the streetlight fee. Right now, MLGW is asking ratepayers for more money while millions of dollars in their budget are unexplained, inflated, or simply not justified. The biggest red flag is the two hundred and twenty-eight million, five-year tree trimming contract. Last year, MLGW spent four, forty-three point six million dollars trimming one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four miles. This year, they've spent thirty-five point five million and say they've trimmed more than the fourteen hundred miles planned. If productivity is increasing, the cost should be going down, not up. Instead, we're staring at a twenty-eight million dollar over-budget cushion with no clear explanation. We also heard claims that Memphis terrain explains the higher cost. But anyone who knows Tennessee knows that Nashville and Knoxville have far, far more hilly, treacherous terrain, that justification does not stand up to common sense. At the same time, MLGW is proposing to buy the Goodlett Farms property for thirty-one point eight million and another thirty million for renovations. These enormous expenditures are happening while streetlights all over the city still don't work, yet ratepayers are being asked to pay more. But wait, there is more. At the recent MLGW budget hearing, only three of thirteen council members were present. You would think that for decisions of this scale, the public deserves full oversight, not rubber-stamping and poli, and rubber-stamping budgets and policies. This budget shows no adjustments to the water division, even though several large industrial users have drastically reduced their draw on our aquifer. When production needs fall, costs should fall, too. Twenty twenty-five is not the year to raise fees.
Ms. Fox, if you could wrap it up, please.
Okay. It is the year to demand transparency. I urge you to reject the streetlight fee increase, reject the 2025 electric rate increase, and require an independent audit of the tree trimming contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fox.
Good afternoon. Glenda Hicks, six oh eight Gillies, co-founder Twenty First Century Memphis Her Bust. I sent each of you emails earlier regarding the budget, and I hope I can get through my comments. On November fourth, I came before this body saying that this critical, overwhelming, hurting state that the government shutdown has put the majority of the citizens in must be at the forefront of your actions. The 2026 MLGW budget does not give any consideration to this true no-fault-of-our-own reality that our most vulnerable citizens drastically now find themselves in. To act with genuine concern, extending heartfelt aid and financial ease, you must take action and pause the third straight four percent electric rate increase slated to hit January one, 2026. There has been much back and forth said about the massive two hundred twenty-eight million dollar allocated funds for the five-year tree trimming contract. Using common sense and simplistically looking at the data, I see at least twenty-eight million dollars over allocation. These funds will offset the dismissal of a four percent electric rate increase. As factually stated, if MLGW stays the course and trims its planned fourteen hundred miles per year, their documentation clearly shows that forty million a year is lavishly questionable and definitely more than adequate. Approving lavish budgets is not Memphis's reality. It is absolutely not just, not equitable, usage of ratepayers' monies. Doing business as usual without consideration for harmful impacts of first MLGW's massive billing delay fiasco, MLGW's continuous overestimated billing and inaccurate billing occurrences, TVA's constant fluctuating fuel cost adjustment charges, and...
Ms. Hicks, if you could wrap it up.
Yes. So all of these factors need to be taken into consideration and have not. So we are asking, and we represent over a thousand members, we are asking that you certainly pause and dismiss this four percent rate increase and that you not allow any increases, period, including street lighting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hicks.
Good afternoon. Andrea Bell, fifty-four, forty-five Ridge Mill Lane. I am here because I would like for you to deny the budget and send back for reconsideration and dismiss the four percent electric rate increase. We have shown that we have the money to delay the four percent increase. Think about this, please. TVA is the lowest utility provider in the U.S. It services seven states. And here in Memphis, we just gave our city employees a pay raise to a minimum of forty thousand dollars. We are the most impoverished city in Tennessee, Commissioner Ford. Memphis used one-fifth of their income for their utility bill. Let's put this in perspective. Councilwoman Green, she just said she looked up the SNAP benefits for a single mother with two kids. We're, thank you, guys, for giving five hundred thou, five hundred thousand to the food bank, but that is a Band-Aid. Lower-cost utilities is a fix. It is a fix to help us out. What is the issue? The issue is that we councilmembers should do our due diligence. MLGW is just business, but we should be just business for our people. We cannot continue to keep us in poverty. Nashville's rates are lower than ours. Across the board, it's lower. And here, we are in Memphis, and we're struggling, and we have the highest rates. Please, councilmembers and women, deny this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Councilwoman Carlisle, and then I'm going to ask President McGowan to come up after Councilwoman Carlisle finishes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'm sure Chief or President McGowan would probably do a far better job. I'll say a couple things, and unfortunately, I've got a family emergency that I've got to go immediately for. I probably, I'll admit, I probably haven't dove into this budget as well as I should have because it's a multi-billion-dollar utility company that has senior leadership that was put in place and has a board of commissioners that was appointed, which is how the structure is set up. If you don't like the structure, that's one thing. But the idea to insinuate that members have rubber-stamped this plan is insulting at the least. And I won't go to the worst because I know how hard, especially the chairman of the MLGW Committee's worked, how hard the senior staff at MLGW have worked. And the reason that you didn't have multiple members in there is because it's possible, maybe possible, during our part-time jobs with our other lives, we took time out of that schedule to go and meet with them one-on-one to get those questions answered. Maybe that's possible. You know what? It is, because that's what happened. When you're not here, we're not here in this room, we actually do take meetings and spend time. So I take extreme, extreme issue with saying that that got rubber-stamped. People work very hard up here, including the staff. Like, it's insane. You guys want better politicians, and you beat the crap out of them when they're here 24/7. It's like a lose-lose. Like, you want more, but you want to pay less for it. It's a lose-lose. Like, get on board with the vision. We're trying to build something better. We're not perfect, but we're working on it. We appreciate you being here, but like, at the end of the day, I've been here for six years, and I'll channel Martavius Jones. You cannot pay less and constantly expect more in this city, full stop. I will also acknowledge that we have to have better oversight, and we are working every day to do that. And you see it in the documents that are being produced. But I appreciate all the hard work that everybody on this body has put in and continues to do. I appreciate you being here and being away from your families and taking that time. I appreciate the people in the audience doing the same thing. But honestly, if you really want better representation, start being more optimistic and supportive of the people instead of just absolutely coming here every day and beating the crap out of them, and then wondering why, quote, "good people don't run." Thanks. I'll be supporting this, but I've got to go.
Thank you, Councilwoman Carlisle. President McGowan, you want to come give us a brief synopsis?
Good evening, everybody. Doug McGowan, Memphis Lake Gas and Water, two twenty South Main. Thanks for allowing me to be here, Mr. Chair. So I certainly appreciate the passion that people have for supporting the work that we do and holding us accountable, including this body, and the work that you all have done to meet with me individually and ask questions, hard questions about the budget. At the end of the day, this budget in 2025 is, excuse me, 2026 is smaller than the budget that we had in 2025. It allows us to continue all the good work we've done to improve the reliability of all of our customers, and it doesn't include any new rate increases for water or gas. It does have that third increment of the electric rate increase that was approved a few years ago. But the one thing that it certainly does not do is continue business as usual. Business as usual for decades was to underfund the organization, to not do preventative maintenance that was necessary, to put into place new controls that said we can wait to replace infrastructure until it fails, and to delay modernizing our system. Well, that bill has come due, as we've talked about some number of years ago when we put these rate increases in place, and we are paying that penalty today for lack of reliability and something we have got to get over. So we had a modest increase that we requested in order to improve that reliability. So this continues that very same plan. We are staying the course, the plan that you all reviewed and approved, and continue to fully fund preventative maintenance, to renew and replace infrastructure, and to modernize our infrastructure. And so what have we wrought from that? From that investment in the last two years, we have reduced customer outage minutes by more than fifty percent in just two years. It took us twenty years to get here, and in two years, we've reduced it by fifty percent. And so there is value to our customers, and we fully understand the impact of having to pay a few more dollars per month, whether it's two dollars or five dollars per month. But in comparison to, as we often hear about, losing that refrigerator full of groceries because your power's out for too long, that is what we have avoided in many cases. A couple of things I want to comment on. First of all, we have the lowest utility rates in the country for a three-sector utility, electric, gas, and water. You heard earlier somebody say that Nashville has lower rates across the board than we do. Well, the recent rate survey that was just conducted in January shows that Memphis, for electric, gas, and water, has two hundred and ninety-one dollar average bill. The very same volumes in Nashville cost four hundred and twenty-one dollars for the very same volume. That is open for inspection, and it is open for anyone to request. We have the rate study here. In fact, our peers use our rate study to compare themselves to other utilities across the country. The other piece that I'll, we just want to comment on are two. The first is the streetlight fee. This body in 2014 transferred the costs of the streetlights to MLGW to recover through a streetlight fee. It used to be paid through the general fund taxes out of the city. And in 2014, that was transitioned, so the city was no longer responsible. MLGW was responsible for charging a fee. The rate for that was set in 2014. There was an ordinance that did so. In that ordinance, it said that MLGW shall come back periodically when the rate needs to be adjusted to accommodate the costs of running the streetlight plant. 2014, I'm here asking in 2026, twelve years later, to increase the fee by seventeen percent. That is seventy-six cents for a residential customer per month and nineteen cents for an apartment dweller per month. During that period of time, from 2014 to 2027, the rate of inflation has been thirty-seven percent, so I'm not even asking to recover that. There was a separate ordinance by the city council in about 2018 that allocated to MLGW the requirement to absorb the cost of all security cameras that are installed by MPD. When MPD puts those Sentinel cameras or security cameras, the electricity cost is borne by MLGW, the attachment fees and labor rates are borne by MLGW. That annual cost to MLGW is six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have not asked to recover that until this point. And so, together with those increased costs of running those ever-increasing security cameras and the rate of inflation, we're asking for a modest increase in the streetlight fee. To the point about streetlights not working, when we began this project, there were almost two thousand streetlights in the system that weren't working. Today, there's less than four hundred, and we've transitioned all of them to LED streetlights. And our response time when they're out is down by more than fifty percent. So the plant is working much better. The last comment I'll make is about the tree trimming contract, which has been much talked about. There are three arguments that people are making. Number one, that the cost has ballooned from one hundred million dollars to two hundred and twenty-eight million dollars. Number two, that we pay well more than our peers do. And number three, that there's some kind of financial fraud or misappropriation of funds going on. I'll address number three, first of all. We are independently audited multiple times by independent audit agencies. All of our financials are open to public scrutiny, including every invoice that I receive and pay, and anyone's welcome to view them if they should. We have sent those to multiple parties who have inquired and asked through a Public Records Act for an accountability, and we have that, chapter and verse. Second, we do not pay any invoice until such time we're satisfied the work is done. So that's the final point. The first point, that the cost exploded from one hundred million dollars to two hundred and twenty-eight million dollars. In 2018, when we bid a five-year tree trimming contract, the lowest bidder came back at one hundred million dollars. Other bidders started, the next lowest bid was one hundred and forty million dollars in 2018. This is prior to COVID. I want to say that the successful bidder that bid one hundred thousand dollars, or excuse me, one hundred million dollars for five years, came to us two years later and said, "We cannot do the work for the price we quoted you. We need more money." That was about the time I arrived at MLGW, and we said, "You quoted us the price." That was about the time I arrived at MLGW, and we said, "You quoted us the price. You have underperformed. We were supposed to do 1,400 miles a year. You did 600 miles one year, 500 the next, and now you've only done 90. We had to find a new vendor, and I'm not going to pay you more money for underperformance." So we went through an open bidding contract in 2023 so that we could get a new vendor. The bidder that bid $100 million in 2018 submitted a bid for $420 million in 2023. They understand what it took to get the work done, and their bid was four times larger than it was in 2018. There is no comparison between a contract in 2018 and a contract in 2023 when you have more than twice as much debris to remove and you have COVID in the middle. Next, oh, by the way, we had eight bidders on that contract. The bidding process is open to the public. All the bids are available for anybody to inspect, as is our scoring on the sheets. Please, seek us out. Look for the information. It's open to scrutiny. Last point I'll make is the comparison between us and other cities. Yes, we pay more per mile than other of our peer cities do. It's not because of the terrain. Certainly, we have a lot of trees, as do other service territories, but what we have in Memphis, Tennessee, is 37% of our overhead distribution lines are on rear property lines of people's houses. In Nashville, it's less than 20%, and in Knoxville, it's less than 5%. When a tree trimming contractor performs tree trimming in the rear lot line, they cannot use a bucket truck to cut those trees, and they cannot use heavy equipment to remove the debris. It's all done manually, and tree trimming contractors charge five times more for that kind of work than they do for trees trimming with a bucket truck. So yes, 37% of our system's rear lot line, the next closest is 20%. It's not even close in the comparison. That matched with the fact that our prior contractor, underperformed for at least three years, meant that we had at least two times as much debris to remove. That is why the cost is inflated from the original bid, which was not realistic in the first place. Again, I will come back to results. What are we getting for it? About a 50% reduction in outage minutes for our customers when combined with infrastructure improvements. So, quite frankly, it's defamatory for people to continue to assert that there's some kind of financial malfeasance down here when absolutely nothing is further from the truth. With that, Mr. Chair, I will conclude my comments. I would ask for your approval of the 2026 MLGW budget.
Thank you, President McGowan. Very well said. Colleagues, seeing no other members in the queue, Madam Controller, please take us to the voting screen. Members, cast your votes.
Cooper Sutton, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Green, yes. Smiley, yes. Spinoza, yes. Swearingen, Washington, yes. Walker, yes. Warren, yes. White, yes. Chairman Canali, yes.
That item passes. Madam Controller, please call item 42.
Item number 42 is a resolution to appropriate $250,000 in FY26 CIP funding for the Oberton Park Shell to renovate the lower set of restrooms and add six upper restroom stalls, District 5, Super District 9. This resolution is sponsored by the administration.
Thank you, Madam Controller. If you could move the screen to item 42. Thank you. Councilman Dr. Warren, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Committee met, recommend approval, and I so move.
42 was moved by Warren, seconded by Swearingen, Washington. Seeing no members in the queue, please take us to the voting screen.
Cooper Sutton, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Green, yes. Smiley, yes. Spinoza, yes. Swearingen, Washington, yes. Walker, yes. Warren, yes. White, yes. Chairman Canali, yes.
That item passes. Madam Controller, please call item 43.
Item number 43 is a resolution approving an additive change order to amend the Stormwater FY26 CIP budget by transfer and appropriation of funds in the amount of $394,520 from Drainage ST Cover Line, project number ST03205, to South Germantown Road Drain Improvement Project Number ST03227, due to additional funding resource EPA WIPI loan established for the installation of pipes along South Germantown Road, District 2, Super District 9. This resolution is sponsored by the administration.
If you could move the screen to 43, Madam Controller. Thank you. Councilman Smiley, you're recognized.
Committee met, recommend approval, and I so move.
43 was moved by Smiley, seconded by Spinoza. Seeing no members in the queue, please take us, members, cast your votes.
Cooper Sutton, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Smiley, yes. Spinoza, yes. Swearingen, Washington, yes. Walker, yes. Warren, yes. White, yes. Chairman Canali, yes.
That item passes. All right, colleagues, that takes us to the end of our agenda. I believe Madam Vice Chair has our same-night-minute items ready.
Thank you, Chair. Our same-night-minute items are numbers 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 44, and 46. And I so move.
Same-night minutes were moved by Swearingen, Washington, seconded by Spinoza. Seeing no members in the queue, members, please cast your votes for our same-night-minute
Cooper Sutton, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Smiley, yes. Spinoza, yes. Swearingen, Washington, yes. Walker, yes. Warren, yes. White, yes. Chairman Canali, yes.
That item passes. Colleagues, that brings us to our public comment portion. Missy Robinson, here up first. And name and address. You have two minutes, please.
Missy Robinson, 4358 Rhodes Avenue. In 2021, Councilman Smiley proposed a resolution to start the Memphis Academy of Civic Engagement, a program that helps citizens learn how local government works and discover ways to get involved in the community. I'm a lifelong Memphian, but until I participated in the spring cohort of that program this year, I'd never watched a city council meeting, spoken with a city leader about an issue, attended a protest, or joined an advocacy group. And this year, I have done all of those things and more. It isn't an overstatement to say that the program changed my life and awakened my desire to get involved. So thank you, Councilman Smiley. I'm here today to commend you on your continued leadership as one of the plaintiffs in the lawsuit challenging the deployment of the National Guard in Memphis. While our city does need assistance from the governor and state officials in terms of helpful policies and resources, they need to be born out of hope, not fear. The merits of the various federal agencies involved in the Memphis Safe Task Force can be debated, but the lawsuit is specifically about the governor sending the National Guard to Memphis without the proper legal basis. And even though the easy thing would have been to just say, "Oh, well, they are here now," I appreciate the local officials who courageously stepped up to move forward with this suit. This is my first time to make a public comment, and I'm here simply to say thank you to Councilman Smiley.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Thank you for your comments. Thank you for being here.
Hi, I'm Jonathan Hill, 1350 Concord's Avenue, 38104. I want to start also by thanking Councilman Smiley for showing up at our Union Rally pre-concert this past Saturday. Library workers, as you witnessed, are really good at putting on community events on a shoestring budget or with no budget at all, and we all enjoyed listening to great local music, creating art together, and being encouraged and supported by our neighbors. So many people were enthusiastic about our organizing. In fact, every time we canvass festivals or show up at community events, every door we knock, we hear the same thing: "I love the library." Seriously, every, all of my feedback has been positive 100%. Supporting the library is never a wrong move. We know there are many issues affecting Memphis right now. We also know that supporting the library, especially at this time, tells Memphians that its city leaders believe they deserve good things in their communities. Libraries are safe spaces, and library workers are the ones who keep our libraries going. Library workers facilitate access and opportunity, and access and opportunity is what can build community wealth, joy, and safety. We know this. It's time to make library workers a priority so we can show Memphians that they are a priority. We urge you to support Councilman Smiley's and his co-sponsor's ordinance for a referendum to change the city charter so that library workers are finally allowed civil service status. Thank you sincerely for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Councilman Smiley, you're recognized.
So I think this is a good time. At the next council meeting, you see how Meredith's looking at me? That means she has to do a lot of work. So Ms. Keating has prepared an ordinance, a referendum ordinance, and to channel Councilman Carlisle, first of all, keep his family in prayers. To channel Councilman Carlisle, I think the very least we can do is give the people an opportunity to say whether they want to support the library workers or not. So at the next council meeting, we'll have a referendum ordinance, because I know Attorney Wade and Attorney Owens have reviewed it and have been ready to go for this council meeting. So, you know, this is an opportunity to say if you want to be added as a co-sponsor. So I think we have Councilwoman Walker. Thank Councilwoman Green. And Councilman Ford. I would love everybody to join. Yes, co-sponsors. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Councilman Smiley.
Emmeline Rogers, 670 West Drive, 38112. Every Thursday, I sit down to knit and crochet with whoever makes it out to the East Shelby Library with a willingness to learn. This past Friday, one of my regulars asked me about a news interview she'd seen about our union. I am so glad I was able to tell her that we have the support of the council and are moving forward towards gaining the rights we deserve. She has come to the last three fiber arts classes I've held, and she uses the library regularly to study and print, as well as a place to meet people and decompress at the end of the workday. She believes us to be invaluable. She and the rest of our patrons are a big part of why I joined NPL Workers United and why I come here to speak. As we finalize the language of our proposed referendum, I would like to thank J.B. Smiley, Jerry Green, Pearl Walker, and Dr. Warren for their efforts to work with us on these issues. Every Memphis and Shelby County resident will benefit from a well-funded library system with basic workplace protections for every employee. They are already paying attention to what we are doing here. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to have something good to share when they ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Denise Yule. Did she leave?
Good evening. Alexandra Farmer, 1044 Bruce Street, 38104. Yeah, I also want to start my comment by thanking all of you. I am really excited, and all of the library workers are really excited for the city council's support, and we do hope that more of you will join in Councilman Smiley and be a co-sponsor of his ordinance. I just wanted to talk a little bit tonight about our union and tell you about how NPL Workers United is really all about democracy. It's about the democracy that we serve in our libraries and the democracy that we're building for ourselves together as workers. Libraries don't exist to make profit. They exist to serve the public and to increase access and opportunity for everyone. But that mission can only work when the people who keep our libraries running are protected, respected, and able to speak up without fear. But currently, our status as political appointees has denied us these basic rights by limiting transparency in our libraries, silencing workers, and ultimately weakening library services. But library workers have come together to change that, and now Memphis will have an opportunity to change that as well. We are really grateful to Councilman Smiley and to his co-sponsors for bringing forward an ordinance that would let the people of Memphis vote on a charter amendment to reclassify library workers as civil servants. That is how democracy should work, the public deciding how its public institutions operate. Civil service and a union for the library workers means stability, accountability, and efficient, transparent processes that strengthen all of our libraries across the city. We hope we can count on all of your support and for more of you to become co-sponsors for this ordinance. Thank you so much for all of your time and for your commitment to the people of Memphis who we all serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farmer.
Timothy Foster, 2551 Hernando Road, 38106. First of all, I'd like to start out by saying that I'm a nobody, but now my agenda is Mud Island. And I don't know if anybody is we into Mud Island, but I know we got the King's Bridge that's coming, so I thought we changed Mud Island to King Island. And we need to be known, Memphis needs to be known for something. I feel that would be really exciting to the whole United States. And on King's Island, if we decide to do that, I would like to see Memphis being noted for the world's largest ferret's wheel on King's Island. So when people come across and see, and I got this from New York at Coney Island, they got the world's ferret when you're on the island over there. So if Memphis could turn Mud Island, it's been sitting there dormant for so many years, and I feel that it's time for Mud Island to change the name from Mud Island, because the word mud sounds like, I don't know. But if we change it to King's Island, to go along with King's Bridge, I think we have something going good there, and we would put the world's largest ferret's wheel there. And I would like to be a part of this if it ever become to existence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. And you are not a nobody. You are very much a somebody, and we very much appreciate you being here and your comments this evening.
Chief Andre Matthews, 2115 Stovall Avenue, District 7. Greetings to all honorable council persons here. For the record, I represent the local farmers called Family Farmers Cooperative. My grandfather, Whitty Daniels, and his uncle, Clifton Howard, had the cottonfield buses that took people to Arkansas in the '30s, '40s, and '50s. So we are longtime farmers in our family. I'm here to request assistance for the North Memphis Food Store and Market located at 1849 Warford Street on 10 Acres. Our network of farmers stand ready to help support the community food pantries and the Memphis Food Bank. We have been growing in the Tennessee for over 100 years, and as you know, recently, long lines have been formed around the city, and at every site, the food runs out. We offer our assistance with our farmers, our equipment, refrigerator trucks, and our experience in food service and production. We are needed at this time. People need food now and in the future. Will you hear our cry? Will you support our local farmers? Will you help us feed the community? We have a lot to do. We have a backup support system from farmers in the tri-state area to supply our market if we can get some assistance. So we need, we've been waiting since 2022. Please hear our cry. These are our children. These are our hungry families. My phone number is 901-690-2220. My phone number is 901-690-2258. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Chief Matthews. Councilwoman White.
Well, I was just asking for clarity. Is it a nonprofit or? Yeah. Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah. If you could, sir, I would. Is it Chief Foster? Matthew Foster? You don't have to come back up. I'll come back to you once the meeting is over.
All right, colleagues, that brings us to the end of public comment. I would like to say before we go to my colleagues and to the staff and to all of your families, as we approach Thanksgiving week, I want each and every one of you to know how thankful and grateful that I am for each one of you and your families and all of the service that you provide to our beloved city. I know what a tough task it is, and I know the hours that you put in, and I love and care for each one of you. So I wish all of you a very, very happy Thanksgiving and let your families know how much they are appreciated too because of the sacrifice for them as well. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned. Be careful going home. God bless you.